Thank you.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion of dissent agenda?
So, second?
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Public input is time-based, the special items, not already on the agenda with timing in three minutes each. Budget presentation, library.
So, I'm Elizabeth and I'm here today with Darrell Aaron, our treasurer of the library, and also Rich Eskelson, who's our president of the board. So, I think this has been my first year here at the Lisbon Library. It's a gem for the community. I want to just go over a few things that we've done this year. First, just an overview of the library. We have over 10,000 physical materials available for checkout. Plus, we provide additional from any library in Iowa through interlibrary loan. We provide access to 2e collections, bridges, and hoopla. And those give us another 150,000 and 1.5 million e-resources available for the community. We provide technology access, printers, computers, wifi, and tech assistance for the public. And services to promote literacy, including a summer reading program, storytimes for the public, and the LACC. And with the Friends of the Lisbon Library, access to the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which we also support. So, on the front of this, we've got an overview of some highlights from this year from the library. And on the back, the Friends of the Library put together some information about the Dolly Parton Imagination Library and how these children have served. We also provide services to promote community connection and lifelong learning, programs for all ages, as well as collaboration with various community partners like Parks and Rec, Southeast Lynn, community center, and local businesses. So, in the last year, the library has updated our website, our catalog software, and our online calendar software. We hosted new events, including cooking classes for both adults and children, a visit from the Raptor Center, campfire storytime at City Park, and an offer talk and bar crawl at all local establishments in Lisbon. We're currently finishing up a community survey, and we'll use this feedback to create a plan for the next five years. We couldn't do all of this without you, so thank you very much for generously supporting us. If you have any specific questions about the budget request, Darrell can answer them. But basically, it's cost of living increases rounded to the nearest thousand. So, if anyone has any questions for me or any of the board members that are here tonight at the library, thanks.
Any questions? When is, is this the most, this will be? It's got a question. The building, the maintenance and repair, was there a problem with the roof? Is that, is that much to handle, so they could cover the matter?
So, that's the 27th game where it's going to be a budget method. That's going to get, that's going to be paid this year. It's going to get added soon. There, that lift out here is for that project.
Oh, well, I don't have enough money to do that.
So, did it include it in this year? This will be done in over, which one was done?
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure that.
And then you'll notice the west wall fund. That's kind of just an overall earmark that's kind of been in there for several years. And that's for just ongoing maintenance. If they were to store preservation or the library gets a, receives a grant for any updates, that can be used to match or whatever they need to do that.
Just want to make sure that.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you. That's easy. Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Yeah.
Secretary. All right. The only big change in this is our wages. There's a percentage of each person that gets taken out of this. As you can see, we budgeted 7,000, we're at 10,741, so we adjusted that. There's a certain percentage that'd be raised, some employee out of, that comes out of this. So, that's a 15,000. Everything else, you can kind of see, we're pretty much in line with the spend. Grounds maintenance, or building maintenance repair, I lowered that one since we haven't used anything there. But it seems like every three years, we do use something out of there. And that's for where we have the gazebo and the little shed out there. If there's anything that's fixed on either of those. So, as you can see, the asking is pretty much, the only difference is the $8,000 difference from last year to this year. So, 62, 100.
Maybe that's 15,000, wages, 8,000 increase, what's that for?
So, there's a, there's a percentage of each employee. So, some employees, it's like 10% of their salaries gets taken out of cemetery. There's others that are 5%. And just adding all that up to why that's like that. It's not for any particular ones, just.
Any other questions? Southeast Lynn.
Nicole McAlexander with Southeast Lynn. I think we had some materials in your packets that gave us some highlights from our last year. Some of the new things that we did, we started free summer lunch on Thursdays before the movie that we work, that we do with the library every weekend in summer. That went really well, and we've secured a grant already to expand that to two days a week in summer. We also have an anonymous donor who would like to fund another day. So, we may be able to do three free meals a week per pitch this summer. We also worked with the Mount Vernon Lisbon Childcare Solutions Group over the last year. Did some fundraising and secured a grant that came from the state. We are one of 12 communities in the state that were part of a pilot program for increasing wages for childcare workers. So, that brought $63,000 into the community that was used for retention and recruitment bonuses, for mostly for the employees of the LACC and as well as the kids' club in Mount Vernon. But, so 95 people benefited from that. And it helps secure 35 additional childcare slots in the community. As we know, there's a lot of families looking for childcare here. So, we're happy to be a part of that, that project. The other, one of the things I'm excited about is we're back to above pre-pandemic levels of volunteer participation. So, we had over 5,000 hours from volunteers in our last fiscal year, which is more than our paid staff hours. So, the community really supports the work that we do with not only their donations, but their time and their energy, which makes what we do possible. Any other questions from the, the stuff we provided?
Any questions?
We greatly appreciate your support financially and the support that you provide all year long and promoting and highlighting things on Facebook and sharing information in the city newsletters that really helps us connect with the community. We appreciate it.
So, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
That pilot program for free, how much is, how much does that cost?
Well, we did it pretty cheaply because it was all volunteer labor and we got a lot of the food donated. So, I think we spent less than 800 dollars for the one day a week. Molly Cart is our volunteer activity coordinator, and she can fund every bargain there is. So, she stretches our dollars even further. One, one more thing I did want to mention is going into the new year, we are, so our board of directors is made up of half Mount Vernon and half Lisbon residents. And we are seeking a couple more Lisbon residents to be on our board of directors. So, if you know anybody who might be interested in that, we're, we're looking for two more people to keep our, to keep that balance.
Thank you very much.
Fire. All right. This pretty much does. We'll just draw your attention to a couple of things down. In repair, maintenance, and utilities, the first one, building maintenance and repair. Budget 500 every year for that, bring that 1,000. The north door, walk-in doors, all rusted out. Sometimes you have to actually push it shut to get it to shut. So, that bid's going to be at least $1,000 if we can get the work done in-house. I'd rather be hiring that, but, so that's why that ends up. Vehicle operations, I raised, as you can see, we're at 6,700 and 4,000 spent. So, a large part of that was the brakes on 405. But I'm going to be raising that to 6,000. If you go down minor equipment, I did lower that, 3,000. I skipped over one, sorry. What about that insurance expense? You can see last year, it was 15, roughly, we're at 16,000. We budgeted 13,000. It doesn't come out until March, so that's why it's only showing 539. So, I'm just shooting the dark here, but I'm guessing it's going to be around 16 to 17. So, that's a 4,000 increase there. But overall, after you lower it with the minor equipment, we're real close. We're 85 over 50 versus 82, 350. And like I said, a lot of that has to do with vehicle operations and insurance. Everything else is the same or lower.
25,000 is 5,000, should be 5,000.
I'll chalk with that.
Should be 5,000, so 500, right?
We're at?
Right now.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Good catch.
You want, is you going to put some money in here for a new vehicle? You talked about, are you guys going to get another vehicle?
I believe that's in the capital improvement every year is 25,000, I believe.
I thought we were going to buy, buy something.
Oh, the pumper?
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure when that's going to be due. But that's going to come, that'll be a transfer in from lost. So, we'll have to do that when that comes due. We won't pay it until that chest gets delivered to the shop, so.
Any questions? Any?
This is pretty much that's cool. A little bit less. I'm still anticipating minor radio this year out of minor equipment. We always allocate so much money in here, and it's one of those deals. It's like, if you need it, you're going to far exceed it, and if you don't, you don't use it. So, I would just put something in there to earmark it. But 35, $3,550 this year. I was down about 400.
Did you, if you want to buy it for them, which size it was?
You think I'd trade, trade a couple in and?
Oh, yeah. You want to put a little more there to buy?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that I can get one with trading off of the money that we got allocated. Should be able to get it in there.
I know that.
We can trade two, we got two of those old, the ones you have, maybe they'll do it. Like two to three in one type.
Any other questions? For the preservation?
They met last Thursday. We kind of went over some of this ahead of time. As you can see, they haven't spent anything out of their budget thus far. So, we lowered it in a couple areas. And they met last Thursday, and their preservation board approved this. Lisbon is down there a lot of times, it's pretty grand money that they get, they can match. Along with like the west wall, they can use other funds as well, but.
Any questions? YTT presentation.
Everyone, please search, civil engineer of YTC, Doug. We're here to talk about phase two of the sport complex. Do you guys have the information? We are looking at taking sport complex and sending out two separate bids. The first bid would be a grading bid, which is like a rough grading to be done by a mass grading contractor. And then the second bid will be the actual baseball fields. The reason we did that is they're too completely different contractors, the types of work they do. So, it just makes sense to break them up like that. So, the baseball field bid, or the baseball field cost opinion, right now, we're looking at about 1.29 million total. But what we have done is we have broken out items that we consider pretty alternates. Maybe there's a way to do them in-house, do them a different way. So, we have, we're going to have a base bid that's around 762,000 right now in our cost opinion. And then we're pulling out these alternate items. So, the base bid items would be the baseball fields, all the preparation of the fields, all the seeding, the irrigation, the subdrading system, the skid in fields, the backstops, all the fencing that goes right around the fields, and preparation of the dugouts, but not the dugouts. So, wing pole, backstop, netting, all that would be in the base bid. The alternates that we're looking at would be putting in, what we're going, like the sidewalk and the pavement around the area that could go in later, the lighting system, which is a feature of lighting for the roads. The, doing some conduit work for future electrical. And the bleachers also could be an item that could be done after. And those wouldn't go in until the pavement and the sidewalk isn't anyway. So, if you're going to pull the sidewalk out, you're going to pull the bleachers out too, because you wouldn't have anything to attach them to. And then the other item that we pulled out as an alternate would be what we would call like the continuation of a perimeter fence. So, fencing that's not directly related to the ball fields. It would be like fence up on the north side to gate the entire area in. So, the whole thing would be within a eight foot fence, which is something that could be done separately, not necessarily by the sports field builder. So, we're just making sure that all the items that are in that base bid are the things that sports field builder, these specialized contractors, make sure they do all of that as one comprehensive thing. So, that's where we are.
Just so everybody knows what we're talking about. It's basically from here south. Might as well park a lot of new fields. It would be a large continuous sidewalk, seven feet, six feet?
Water.
Okay.
It's extractable for prices.
This is going up into, this building wouldn't be here yet, but it would be these two fields. They would have like warning tracks, the fencing would go around. It would be ready to play. So, the thought with the alternates were, they could be add. So, for instance, like lights is 185,000. We could wait and add after the next budget year, depending on how these bids came in. We could add lights beyond that. We're also working on some sponsorships for that as well that could play into that. So, the thought is, is to get everything put in to have baseball and at least get that going. The grading, there's two, if you see on your paper, there's two options. Option one would be, or option cheaper one?
Option two was. And then if you look at those grading alternatives, I saw that you, there's color coded heat maps. And I think they're the best way to kind of understand what we're talking about when we're looking at the grading.
So, it's real high.
Yeah. So, there's like a big ridge up there. If you take a look at those colorful color drawings, anything that's like in an orange or a red, that's a big cut. Anything in yellow, we're not really changing much, kind of put. So, the gray doesn't change much. Then anything in the green is a fill. So, kind of just gives you a nice idea of where we got to move dirt from up here over here, fill in these green spots, and then kind of level out the yellow areas throughout. So, that would be, this first one that I get as option one would be everything to get the baseball fields and the softball fields for the future ready to go. But that's a lot more grading, and if it's not in the budget. Option two was just focusing on what we need to do to get the baseball fields prepped and ready and available. And then still have the earth work to finish up the softball fields later. But we've already counted all of the site's ballots, the earth is, the dirt is there, it's just a matter of moving it around. And when we do it, do we do it now or do we do it later? Those are our grading options.
So, do it all, 257,000, just do them. Baseball fields, 150,000.
Yeah.
So, our thought was, was to send out everything, see what we did back. I'm looking at roughly 1 to 1.1 million total funding that would be available to spend. And then, I think, just looking at this, doing the cheaper option grading, what the, what the base bid comes back. I think everything but the lights and the fencing around the entire perimeter, I think we can get all that done within that 1.1, we're real close to it. And then that would be basically the lights and the perimeter fencing to add the next year.
And the fields are going to take some time to come in. They will, we have a very dialed-in specification on seeding, what we consider acceptable, how long it's going to take, and it's going to, with the irrigation system going in, it's going to come in well. But it's going to take a lot. So, it's, we have a whole growing season to go through to get it fully there. So, pushing some of the stuff off isn't really going to be an issue because we still have to get those fields out there ready to play on and grow in.
So, they look like, look like Marcelo, or who have we just got?
It looks like from the outside, it's going to look like triple play art.
Triple play.
So, it'll look like the warning track, the same dugouts. The specs are going off of that.
Pretty much off of that, yeah. It's going to look like triple play.
So, it's going to look, it's going to be really nice. Now, the three upper diamonds, that's going to be a future plan until we get funding for the three at the top.
So, you have two?
The two big ones, and we can play any, any level, can play at that.
Yeah, we have all the different base spacing, everything included in, including the different plugs and the different anchors. Everything's going to be ready for it to go, the full range of recreation up to baseball.
So, what's the, what's the cost difference if we extend the grass and turf?
Which, do we?
Yes, what the, what the cost difference would be on turf?
I didn't even know those numbers. You mean, in getting rid of the skid in field and?
Yeah.
You know, honestly, we pretty much talked from day one that we wanted it this way. If I can find the number for you, but I haven't.
I assume it'd be more expensive.
I don't like think so. I think we had gone with this option for the versatility and the different users of the field. But if that's something you guys want us to vote, yeah, we can take it and get that number back to you.
There's a lot up there at Prospect Mall, I think that's what it's called.
The one?
Probably Home Road.
That's Prospect Numbers, yeah, the Marion area, yeah.
Miss Trump.
Oh, the turf.
Actually, quite turf, and then you can't do middle lane on that field or whatever, right? Because the base is fine turf.
I don't know how the, do you know how it works?
Not entirely, but that was one of the reasons we were working at this midfield and the size and the layout we have was for the fact that it was going to be multi-users. Yeah, this would be the guy to ask that question right here.
I mean, everything's the same except for you don't have a lime infield anymore, you have a turf infield. You still have baseballs, you still have all that stuff, so you could still do all the same stuff. But one thing you have to keep in mind is you got to replace turf every like 10 years because it starts getting worn out. And another thing is that a lot of people don't like about it is when it's super hot outside in the summer, the heat really reflects off the turf, and it makes it kind of miserable for kids to play on. I've never been a fan of it. And I've talked to the, when we went and met at Triple Boy Park and met with the, what's their names, the two that?
Bev and Jim?
Bev and Jim, they, they do this for a living, and they were not, they were not in favor of doing turf. But if you want us to look into it, it's definitely something we can look into.
Yeah.
I think we're.
We're asking, we're talking, they, you know, kind of proceed through and do it kind of faster. Faster than we did with the soccer.
This one's going to have an irrigation system from day one.
Yeah.
So, it will grow in at a much better rate.
And another thing is if you were going to do turf, you're, I mean, it's very, very expensive. If you were going to do it, the money is, the money that we have, we probably would only be able to afford to do an infield turf and have the outfield still grass. Because if you do the whole thing turf, like the Iowa Mets baseball field, you're talking millions. So, it's hundreds of thousands a week.
Okay, granted, you said 1.1 million. Has this not doing good work for the top three diamonds, right?
Correct. Because that's going to be one, basically, if you did the 762, the, what you have to do, plus the first grading and the second grading option, which is the cheaper, that's 915,000. So, you're looking at, you know, 200,000 remaining roughly, just shy of. So, if you go down to the bottom, you can get all pavement. And again, we're making this alternate, it's something we might be able to do in-house significantly cheaper. But if, let's just say you took that bid, you got your 8,200, your 19,000, your 6,000, 38,000, your 14,000. And there's about 160. And then you get on, yeah, there's 300, 2500. You know what they, we'd be shy, it'd be the bleachers. That would be probably get all that done with the current funding. And like I said, if this spans over two bunch of years, there's opportunities there for more funds.
But I, I mean, I guess I'd like to have all the grading done at one time. The extra 100,000 dollars. So, this is a two or three-year project?
I'd say these two, when we're building.
I agree with doing what we did now, because I don't know what it takes for the next year to do this year. And then the next year is going to be, we got to get our money for, you know. I mean, that way at least your grading's done. All you have to do is just build the films.
I have a thought with it, when we're split, those out separately just to see what the two would be.
Why the option two or just?
No. You have the two options. How, are we going to bid those as one and an alternate?
I would say we just pick one and go with it. Because I don't know if we're going to, I would say whichever one we probably want to go with, we just bid that one as far as the grading goes. We could do it as go the lower amount first and then do the alternate to add it on to, just add the extra to get it prepared. Yeah, then you have the option.
So, it comes back to like 300,000 or 400,000 and, you know.
Then you just go with all or one?
But until we get bids, we really don't know.
But if you do it that way, then you have the option. You get the base bid and options, et cetera. You know, that's it for you guys to decide if that's how you want it.
Let's say, let's, if we say we did grade it all, those top three wouldn't have the irrigation system right though.
No, that's just, that grading is just, and that's, what were you describing the grading as? You'll just get it so that the next contractor could come in and do their final grading and laser grading at that point. To just make it all how it's supposed to be, ready to go.
Yeah. And it'll just, it'll be topsoil seeded. It will not have this high-level athletic mix that's going down because we know we're going to rip that area up later. So, it'll have vegetation, it just won't be the same level as the baseball fields.
What's your timeline on bid?
I'm going to sign up to bid. I'm gonna sign up to bid when the holidays are over, so first, it's gonna be in January, or you can send it out now for, over the holidays. But right there, as soon as everyone gets back in, kind of goes out for public bid. And then we'll go back, we're gonna do this.
So if you guys, you guys think about this, kind of, our first meeting in January, kind of, know what you guys wanna do for bids, or what?
Well, you can probably be, I would assume, does like two to three weeks, you have those out?
Like how long is it, will be open? Yeah, three weeks, I think we want it for baseball fields, because the specialty items, they have to go actually get this quote from all the specialty providers for sports field and stuff.
So we're probably looking at the first one in February.
Anyone else? Appreciate it all, diamond, just, we didn't know this.
Thank you, great. All right, thank you guys, see you in January.
Question, possible action, and reference, who's on the table? I spent a number of, very easy, appropriate for water management improvements in the models of a hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars, and seventy nine cents. Dave, you there?
Yeah, I'm barely able to hear you guys there, I'm not sure if there's a problem with the microphone, but, uh, I believe in the order of things here. This is the, uh, release of retainage for rec heat for a hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars, seventy-nine cents. At the last council meeting, we did approve acceptance of the project, so this is setting up so that we can release retainage. And that'll be due on January eighth. Recommend, uh, approval of this pass to put the retainage.
Got a motion?
Motion to approve the payment of the retainage.
Got a motion on the second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Close. Look here, resolution thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four, approving transfer of funds.
This was the last fifty thousand that we budgeted for Ross to go to Rhodes, and this was to add that four foot driven down the side of Business thirty. It'll cost fifty thousand to do that, so that's what that's worth.
Got a motion to, move it? Move it in?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
Done?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents?
Uh, nothing tonight.
City engineer report. Dave, do you have anything to report?
I don't have anything to report tonight, no, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, you, Dave, thank you, and you, thanks, Dave. Public work?
Um, I can't hear anybody on the council.
Should've came to the meeting. Harold?
I could only hear Dan when he was talking, or whoever that was talking.
Can you hear me? Can you hear this, buddy?
Oh, there we go.
All right, I hear stuff that's up here.
No.
I saw Christina's microphone.
You there?
I got Christina's, but that was it.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Sounds like that cellular commercial.
Exactly.
Fast man, here.
Can you hear me? None of it.
Nothing.
She's working on it.
I'd say it's on all the stuff that's up to me.
Oh, yeah, Christina, I can hear you just fine.
Yeah, you're hearing me on the laptop, that's why.
Oh. Well, why don't you just, um, have I missed, have I missed my spot?
Yeah, you were way late.
Oh, okay. Well, then, okay.
Does she have anything to add?
You, you already knew that everything was fine for the budget, so that was good enough.
Yeah, we canceled all of it.
That's looking interesting. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, I'll check it after, but it's on all the settings it's supposed to be, so.
We're gonna move on. Public works.
Uh, I can cover what he has to do.
First one.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna sign off, since I can't hear anything.
All right, thank you, Becky.
I don't have a whole lot, we had our Christmas event, um, Friday of last week, it went really well. Uh, we did a parade downtown, and we had Santa and Mrs. Claus in the fire station, the library was involved, with Christmas music and caroling, and then we also had Southeastland involved with the free will donation big sale. Um, everything went great, we had a really good turnout. And then, uh, I got boys' basketball registrations finalized, and we will start after the first of the year with that. And then I'll work with Brandon on my budget for twenty twenty-six, and I will be here at the end of January, the twenty-seventh, if we could present that.
Any labor grading? Please, bro.
Uh, he's gone and nothing for him tonight.
Anyone else? Blackburn?
I don't have anything.
Fire chief?
Well, the only thing fire-related, and I'll have to get back to you at the next meeting, cause it just came in the mail today, but we did receive a three thousand dollar grant from the DNR for new nozzles. Put this in for the wildland safety grant. Uh, the only thing I'm checking on is, um, it may be a fifteen hundred dollar match, so I am checking to that. Like I said, it just showed up today, so that's all I have in there.
And the fire chief? City administrator?
Um, been working on end of year items that, uh, need to take care of, as well as budgets. Christina's done the reestimation, which is always a big headache, so that's completed, so thank you for that. Finished up, as you've noticed, uh, the water rain project now is complete, Highway thirty is complete. We're now gonna turn our attention back to the, uh, sports complex. Uh, the guys are gonna be starting to do the interior of the pavilion, so plumbing, all that type of stuff, and have that ready to go. Um, and the plan is to play soccer out there in the spring. So everything looked good going into winter, as far as the grass growing, uh, growing. Um, we're also going to get a, um, explanation from the contractor on what we're gonna need to do to do ongoing fertilizer and weed prevention out there. And either look at that in-house or putting that out to bid, uh, just to do that as a cheaper option from here moving forward. So we'll be looking for that soon. Uh, as you can see, the left outside, the, that's for the library roof. Uh, they were planning to start last week, um, I don't know whether slowing down or what have you, but, um, that's here for them to start out the library. I did let Southeastland know they are, and they work with the police department. They're gonna be, um, using the parking stalls on the Washington Street side there by the Southeastland, so everybody's kinda working through that. Big thanks to everybody, uh, participated in the Christmas parade, um, did a turnout, numerous floats, um, just good work by everyone involved there. Heard a lot of compliments with it. It seems like it's getting a little bit of momentum each year in bigger areas, so it's a good thing. Golf cart permits are expiring, it has up to thirty-first, so starting in January, please come down, get your new golf cart permit. We did correlate those with the same colors as the license plate stickers, which, uh, was, was nice, so that, that way everybody has the same color and everybody knows when it's expired and all that. Trash pickup is gonna be Friday this week and next week. I did put a note on the sign out there for everybody, so if anybody asks, it's Friday this weekend, next week. Just Merry Christmas to everybody, and hope you have a happy year. And feel like us.
Sheena?
Just working on the budget and be doing, we need to ten ninety-nine here soon, so, just staying busy.
You don't have to give me one, sure.
No, you don't want one? Sorry, get fired.
I don't have anything other than happy holidays, everybody.
Great.
What openings do we have, like, we got one on P and Z, do we?
Uh, there's one on P and Z, one on Board of, just, actually Board of Justice's fall.
I wanted to say Star Preservation.
Star Preservation.
There was one over there.
Yeah, and that does that.
And I think they just filled the library.
Happy holidays.
Good.
Nothing.
So it was a nice parade, I did watch that. Thanks to the guys for last Friday night, Saturday, for the ice storm that came through. I wish everybody had their holidays and safe, hopefully, I look, it's gonna be really nice this week, so.
Just one thing about the ice storm too, Travis and I talked, that morning they went out and put product down, and it was supposed to get like thirty-eight to thirty-nine, and they never made it, so, um, it was at thirty-four all day, and actually the ice continued to get worse over the winter, so they ended up coming out that night again, and then they plowed all the ice off, so, um, obviously that's why there was maybe, you thought there was a little bit of delay, but they wanted to let that product work, and our hope was that it would melt off.
I, I did notice driving from Lisbon, Melbourne, Melbourne, there was more of a slot. Now, should I put the pre-creed in?
Yeah, that's, Brian, hit Brian now.
Are we, you know if they're, are we gonna look, we gonna look into that?
Yeah, uh, the thought is, is, um, when that grass truck comes from the fire department, is, is doing something with that. We just gotta get the whole specs put together, if it's something that we could maybe buy the brine elsewhere, and just put it on our trucks for now, or if we can start making it ourselves. But you can definitely tell, um, in situations like that, that's where brine shows that it works. You know, it's, it's all temperature-based, it's all certain weather. So, you know, early on though, what was happening was, uh, the state was out, and I know that law enforcement has some discussions with our guys as well. It kinda turned it into black ice, what they did, uh, plow off right away, so ours at least had some traction. Or then it just continued to rain, and it, and as it got warmer, that heated up and ours didn't, so. But yeah, brine really shows its, uh, use in situations like that, that just helps so that, that water and ice doesn't adhere to the pavement.
You, uh, need a brine system?
I'm sorry?
We get you a brine system if you wanna.
That'd be nice.
Carl and Gainswell, they give you the recipe for it, they used to make it on themselves, and they...
I think the time's over, you're gonna use the whole thing?
Yeah, we're probably giving it to you. Just get ready, we'll be, we'll leave your stuff out. Cause it's just, all it is is, you know, salt and wire.
Right.
And you pump it, it's like making soup out of it. Yeah, they got the things they put, they took it off this year, for the side of the dump truck, and it's the hoses and... It's nasty.
I don't know if I have anything else, you can adjourn.